Good evening councillors and members of the public. If it's not too late, a happy new year to you all. Before we commence the meeting, I'd like to draw your attention to the fire regulations, which are on the screen behind me and the small screen alongside the public gallery. And could you please ensure that your mobile phones are switched to silent? And councillors, can I please remind you to speak directly into the microphone and make sure that your card is pushed firmly into the console? Members of the public, thank you for taking an interest in the planning process. I'd like to say that as a committee, we understand that the motive matters under consideration tonight, can be a motive. However, please be respectful of those around you in the public gallery and the committee and refrain from any booing, cheering or any other form of disturbance. So now we move on to the main items of business. The minutes of the meeting, which took place on the 7th of December 2016, have been laid on the table for the last 30 minutes. Are you content that I sign these as a correct record of the meeting? Thank you. Have there been any apologies for absence, Emma?
We have apologies from councillors Jeanette and Stuart Stennett.
Thank you. Any declarations of interest from members?
None for the meeting, but councillor Henry.
Yes, I'd like to make a declaration of interest. I am a member of Uherst Parish Council. Thank you.
Do any other members have any non pecuniary or disclosable pecuniary interests to declare? Jolly good. Have there been any questions received from members of the public, Emma?
None received, chairman.
Now, Tim, have, are there any updates to government guidance or legislation that the committee should be aware of?
There are none in relation to the items on this agenda. Thank you, chairman.
You did very well throwing your voice there, Tim. Right, in site visits, in the event of site inspections being necessary as a result of consideration of the applications at this meeting, these will be held on Monday the 6th of February 2017 at a time to be agreed. Now to move on to the planning applications. The first item is item A1, outline application for the erection of two dwellings with all matters reserved at land adjacent to Penning's Plough Lane, Uherst, GU67SG. Miles, would you like to introduce the application to the committee, please?
Thank you very much, chair. Just before I start there, perhaps look at the update sheet. There's some minor alterations in terms of page 8, paragraph 3, line 11, where after 2016, we add, on the 21st of December 2016, the council submitted a draft local plan, part one, for examination. Page 21, paragraph 6, line 3, delete does not add first the impact on and replace with preserves. And page 24, paragraph 5, add at the end, officers are therefore satisfied that a proposal for two dwellings could provide onsite car parking that accords with the local planning authority's car parking guidelines. There was a late response in terms of ecological matters from the Surrey Wildlife Trust yesterday, and that suggested amendments and additions to conditions and informatives, which are included below. Just to summarise, there's an additional condition 2, related to reserve matters and the timescale for their submission, therefore conditions 3 to 14 inclusive become conditions 4 to 15 inclusive. For all the pre-commencement conditions, let's add to the reasons at the end of the reasons, this is a pre-commencement condition because it goes to the heart of the planning permission. These conditions are conditions 4/11, which are now conditions 5 to 12 inclusive, and conditions 13 to 14, which are now conditions 14 to 15 inclusive. Condition 9, now 10, will be replaced, and that gives more detail, and that's an ecology condition, and it's set out as in page 1 and page 2. And conditions 7 to 8, now conditions 8 to 9 inclusive, add at the end of the reasons, and the conservation of habitats and species regulations 2010. Informative 8 will be replaced, and it's set out as in the words in below. We've also added additional conditions. As I said before, there's condition 2, which is set out below, and then there's three conditions, 16, 17, 18, which relate to restrictions on permitted development rights regard to alterations and extensions to boundary treatments and to changes of use of the garages that hereby permitted. So that's the amendments, and to move on to the application. This is land adjacent to Penning's. It's an outline application with all matters reserved for two detached dwellings. The site location is here on the south side of Plough Lane. Away to the south west is Pavilion House and Uherst Green. And then we've got on to the east and west, the Fields Cottage, Wicket Gate to the left and Penning's to the right, or the west to the east, whatever you prefer. And to the north is open land, albeit, as you'll see in the photos, significantly screened. If you look at the aerial, you can see quite clearly where the, it is, and you can see the line of existing development here. And the green to the south and to the north farmland with Chan Rossa and the lands up here along the green here. If you look at the constraints map, here's Penning's here, that's the conservation area here, and that's the defined settlement boundary up here. This is the AGLV area of great landscape value, which is the hatch in here in green. Okay, this is Gardners Hill. And the Gardners Hill is interesting because this went to the Western Area Committee in November, and it was approved, it was full plan permission for two detached houses and garages. I think I'm showing this because this is countryside beyond the green belt, it's about 400 metres or so from a defined settlement boundary, and 2-3 kilometres from a large assessment. So it has something in common in these regards with the application you see before you. It's about 3 kilometres from Cranley, it's about 300 to 400 metres from the defined settlement boundary, and it is surrounded, well, to the west, east and south west by existing housing. So we feel that, you know, we can reasonably say that this is infill rather than isolated haphazard development. There were two appeals before, one in 1964, one in 1989, refusals and appeals dismissed, and these were because the inspectors did see it as being not infill but actually sort of haphazard, a continuation of haphazard development, and it was contrary to policies. And I would say what has changed since then, although it's a very similar kind of scheme, an outline for two houses, is that the national planning policy framework has come in with its presumption of favourable sustainable development, presumption in favour of sustainable development, sorry, and also the, obviously, there's a new local plan which has come in since then in 2002. So my, our feeling is that while there's an impact on the countryside beyond the green belt, that has to be balanced against other material planning considerations. This is the indicative block plan, as I said before, all matters are reserved, these are the two houses with, looks to be, garages there. And as we go forward, if you look at the principle, we've discussed that it's a balancing act between the countryside beyond the green belt, the character and the prince of the AGLV, and other material planning considerations. In terms of location and development, it is outside the settlement boundary, however the close proximity to the vine assessment and it's readily accessible on foot from the local services with bus services on surrounding roads, leaves us to conclude it's a reasonably sustainable location. In terms of countryside beyond the green belt, the site's fallow, it's heavily screened from adjoining properties. It does have a positive contribution on the area, it's a verdant site, but it is positioned between dwellings and areas characterised by such residential clusters, on the south side of Plough Lane and east side of the green. We feel therefore dwellings are acceptable on this site without harming the character of the country site. In terms of housing type and size, two houses, family sized houses, would accord with the schma for the locality and would present a modest contribution to the housing land supply. In terms of impacts on heritage, a conservation officer felt that the site was not instrumental in providing a buffer between the conservation area and the existing development, and if the existing development reflects the scale of the existing housing around, he feels it would not harm the setting of the Wicket Gate, which is a grade 2 listed building. In terms of trees, a tree officer felt that the veteran oak adjoining existing access gates may be impacted by the current proposed access. Again, to say that this is indicative only, and that, you know, in the detailed stage of reserve matters, should plan permission be granted, further details can be submitted with regard to that, so he has no objections at this outline stage. In terms of access and car parking, no objections from the county highway authority, just the conditions regarding car parking in turn areas to satisfy the Waverley car parking guidelines. In terms of amenity issues, at this early stage, there's no elevational plans, it's felt that given the size of the plots and, you know, that these detailed matters can be looked at in terms of their impact on the visual amenity, design issues, materials, elevation scale and so on. And in terms of residential amenity, there is significant space around the proposed dwellings, and a sufficient site provides satisfactory living conditions to the future occupiers and sufficient distance from the existing properties so to avoid any adverse impacts in terms of residential amenity issues. However, just on that point, we have added three conditions, as suggested in the amendments, which will give us greater control over any development further by removing those permitted development rights which normally would be enjoyed. In terms of ecology, the initial Surrey Wildlife Trust objections have been overcome with regard to greycrested newts, and a number of conditions have been attached to the proposal to cover this, reptiles, dormice and bats, as well as informators providing further information and advice. A three metre buffer zone will help also with protecting the residential amenity if it comes to the reserve matters stage. So we're closely liaised with Surrey Wildlife Trust on this matter, and they felt that we now have sufficient information to make a recommendation and bring this to decision, and that is why the application is before you now. And that is actually all I have to say on this. Councillors, many thanks.
Thank you, Miles. Now, this is a public speaking item, the procedure is detailed on the back of the laminated cards on your seats, and I believe it has been explained to you. So firstly, may I invite the opponent, Michael Sanya, to speak? Good evening, Mr Sanya, you have four minutes from when you begin speaking.
Thank you, Mr Chairman. Members of the committee, my name is Michael Fanyer, I live in Penning's. My wife and I have lived in the village for the past 45 years. The village of Uherst, that is. There are four fundamental objections to this proposal I wish to make. Firstly, this application conflicts with proposals to protect open countryside beyond the green belt, key to this being the NPPF 2012 Act, paragraph 55, which states, local authorities should avoid new isolated homes in the countryside unless there are special circumstances. None of these circumstances apply in this application, and if access to schools, shops and other amenities is a test of isolation, then the residents of Plough Lane would certainly qualify. The nearest bus stop and village shop is just under 1km, the village primary school 1.12km, parish church 1.45km, and the public house 1.6km. Cranley Medical Centre is 4.3km, Gleeblen School 4.8km away. Further, Plough Lane is a derestricted road with no pavement and unlit, all of which means that the residents are heavily reliant upon the private car, which, you may recall, is precisely the criteria the planning officers apply to define isolation, and I would contend this is not a sustainable application. The application cannot also be described as infilling. Infill is usually taken to mean development of a gap in an otherwise substantial frontage of buildings. The site is 47 metres wide and the distance between the fields and Penning's is over 100 metres. The site is open meadow and not at all surrounded on three sides, as the council report implies. The openness of the site gives views to the north, the south and the south east, and enhances the rural nature of the area, which is exactly the reason for the area of great landscape value protection. The proposal would lead to undesirable ribbon development in Plough Lane, and such a loose definition of infilling would certainly put it risk other such sites in the Waverley countryside. The officers admit that the development would have an impact on views from surrounding properties, and correctly say that a view is not a planning consideration. However, a right to privacy is, and the rural open nature of the area would mean that adjacent properties would all be threatened by this proposal. On precedent, secondly, Plough Lane, like many other local lanes, has retained many parcels of land for potential development. If its application is approved, it would open the floodgates on this lane and other locations around the village. In short, it could destroy the rural nature of Uherst lanes forever. Already, Plough Lane and others have become rat runs during the morning and evening commute. On environmental issues, point three, Waverley recognise in their biodiversity checklist that surveys sufficient to establish status, type of use and relative importance of protected ecology must come before a planning decision. The applicant has only carried out a preliminary ecological assessment of the site. No protected species surveys have been conducted, although such species are present and are likely to be affected. The application should at the very least be deferred until protected species surveys have been conducted and an assessment of their importance provided and mitigation proportionate to the impacts guaranteed. Lastly, recent surveys have shown that a new has depressing need as for housing specifically suitable for the elderly and those with young families. The 2014 Uherst and Elland Screen housing report stresses the need for smaller, affordable homes. In the council report, it is stated that Waverley can meet their target housing needs. Why therefore is there a need to develop in the countryside in a protected area beyond the settlement? The proposal as it stands for two, no doubt, high priced houses in this area with all the unwelcome precedent it will create, does not comply with environmental and planning policy.
Thank you, Mr Sanya. Now, may I invite councillor Davis of Uherst Parish Council to speak, please? Good evening, councillor Davis, you also have four minutes from when you begin speaking.
Chairman, members of the committee, my name is Ian Davis, I'm an elected member of Uherst Parish Council. I have three important points regarding this application which I would like to highlight this evening. Firstly, much is made of the officer's report, in the officer's report, of the similarity between this application and the recently consented scheme for two houses at Gardners Hill Road, Farnham. In fact, these two cases are very different. Unlike at Gardners Hill Road, the application before you this evening is in outline with all matters reserved. The level of information required for granting consent on a site such as this needs to be extensive in order to ensure that councillors can be satisfied that the critical protection of countryside, the countryside setting outside the settlement area and directly adjoining Uherst Green Conservation Area can be achieved. Here, there's no indication of the size, bulk, massing, footprint, floor area, appearance, number of stories, access, number of bedrooms other than three plus, height, scale, protection of trees, hedgerows, wildlife or affordability. No assessment of impact on the nearby heritage assets can therefore be made. In contrast, the Farnham application provided all of this detail, along with a visual impact assessment, which should be a minimum requirement in such a sensitive setting. Officers will be left to agree all of this detail at reserve matters stage, but you are being asked to assess the basic principle of development on this site without any detail whatsoever. I cannot see how you're expected to do this. Secondly, sustainability. Policy SP2 of the local plan states that development will be focused on the four main settlements, Farnham, Godling, Hazemere and Cranley. This site lies beyond that focus and is unsustainable. Uherst is defined as having limited facilities. In order to access a range of shops, schools, doctors and employment opportunities, residents of the proposed development will be totally reliant upon car journeys. The Gardners Hill Road site, as we've been told according to the officer's report, lies 400 metres from Farnham settlement boundary and 3km from its town centre. In contrast, the Penning's site lies 4.8km, not within 3km, of Cranley town centre and 3.6km from its settlement boundary. Thirdly, five year housing land supply. The borough now has a 5.3 year housing land supply, although that may have been thrown into some confusion by the appeal decision and the inspector's report on Hewitts Lane Industrial Estate in Cranley last week. So I'm a little bit confused about this, but assuming that we do have a 5.3 year housing land supply, paragraph 49 of the NPPF, a presumption in favour of sustainable development, does not necessarily apply to this site. This is the view of the CPRE and adjacent borough councils. It is the view of this council on occasions, and will become a very important principle as the new local plan unfolds. Councillors, your decision this evening appears to be one on a small outline application of little significance. It is, however, an important matter of principle, a precedent that may, that many subsequent applications may come to rely upon. I would urge you to refuse the application on the grounds of insufficient detail which does not enable a judgement to be made upon the principle of development, given the site's sensitive location in countryside beyond the green belt and adjacent to Uherst Green Conservation Area. The site is also located in an unsustainable location with total reliance upon private car use to access a range of facilities. Thank you for listening.
Thank you, councillor Davis. Now may I invite the supporter, Katie Boyd, to speak, please? Good evening, you also have four minutes, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, chairman, councillors, for the opportunity to speak this evening. My name is Casey Boyd, and I am the applicant for this proposal. After much searching for a self build plot for my young, my young family and, my family and I came across this piece of land that we felt was ideal for our needs. After discussions with your officers, we submitted the application in front of you today for two houses on the only part of Plough Lane frontage that has never been developed. During our research, we found historic maps showing that there weren't any houses along Plough Lane before the 1920s. Since then, the southern side of Plough Lane has been gradually divided into 16 or so fairly regular sized plots, all directly fronting the road. We are of the view that two new houses on this plot would be an appropriate completion of this process. Unlike most new houses, the plot widths we are proposing will be wide or slightly wider than those along the rest of Plough Lane. We're utilising the existing access, no trees or hedges have been or are being removed, and the land has residential properties on both sides and to the rear. Although only one of these will be for my family's own home, we will ensure that both houses are of a high quality design using equally high quality materials. Whilst we were aware of the planning history, from early on, discussions held with your officers confirmed that we are now in a different planning era, and that appropriate and sustainable proposals such as this should be supported as detailed in your officer's report. I would like to finally thank your officers for their advice and guidance, and truly hope that you were able to endorse their recommendation for approval. Thank you.
Thank you, Miss Boyd. I thought that was somebody bringing in a birthday cake then with loads of candles on. So, members, I now, I open up to you, councillor Henry.
Thank you, chairman. As ward member, I have a number of concerns regarding this application. I too live in the village and have lived there for quite a long time. This is, as you know, quite a quiet spot in the village, out of the way of the village. There's been 20 letters of objection. Historically, this is, it's had two previous applications which have been refused, and I believe nothing has changed since then. MPPG 2014, conserving and enhancing the historic environment, I think is very important to this case. Those two previous applications failed, and as I say, nothing has changed since then. It is a sensitive area, it's outside the village settlement, and it adjoins the conservation area. There's very scant information as to what type of development is proposed, other than it's two houses on one plot with three plus bedrooms. Currently, the neighbourhood team have a site identification and housing development criteria consultation, and that paper has recently gone out to the public, where site identification and housing development criteria is being assessed. It's important that that good work that the neighbourhood plan volunteers are doing is not jeopardised, and I feel that this is a case where it may be. With regard to the comparison to the Farnham application, I don't think this is a fair comparison by any means. Sustainability argument has been mentioned by various people, so I won't go further on that. But I am very concerned about the impact on the, not only the surrounding residents, but also on the area. As I said previously, it abuts the conservation area, and it is an island between the green and Plough Lane. And yes, the rest of Plough Lane has been development, has been developed over the years, but this is an island of open space, which I think is quite, quite important. And if there is to be development there, it has to be the right type, type of development so it doesn't become a problem to its natural environment. I think that's all I have to say for the moment, but I'm looking forward to hearing what my fellow councillors might have to say about the matter. Thank you, chairman.
Thank you, councillor Henry. Councillor Goodridge.
Thank you, Mr Chair, Mr Chairman. I wasn't able to do the site visit on Monday, so I did mine this morning, and fully appreciate the location of the site and the dwellings that are in the vicinity and the open spaces that are also around it. Really, two questions or comments. I'd always understood in planning, there wasn't precedence, that if you granted something, it wasn't a precedent for anything else, which was my understanding, unless things have changed in the last 20, 30 years that I've been sitting on planning committees. And therefore, I'm slightly surprised that we are quoting Gardners Hill Road as a precedent that we should be taking note of, particularly as we don't have all the detail of Gardners Hill Road. I do remember, I think, a site visit there a few years ago, so I do, I do remember it a bit, but it's very difficult, you know, to, I don't think there should be a precedent, and because we haven't got all the information, I certainly would ignore, so far as I was concerned, Gardners Hill Road. The other point I wanted to make, which I'd welcome the officer's comment, and I'd also welcome the officer's comment on the public speakers who've been objecting, who've raised various matters, which I would welcome the officer's comment upon. But the point is being made that since the two appeals were dismissed, that we are in a different ballgame now, and that there is a presumption for plant, sustainable development. I'd always understood, going back, that you started with a presumption for granting a planning application anyway, and that therefore there hasn't been a sudden change that you presume against and now you presume for. And I'm, I'm at the moment unhappy with the officer's recommendation, I'm, would welcome to hear other people's views, but I don't think personally there has been a change in planning terms which could justify a U-turn so far as the two appeals are concerned. And certainly precedent is not something which I think is something which I wish to take any notice of. Thank you, Mr Chair.
Thank you, councillor Goodridge. Councillor Ellis.
Thank you, chairman. I did attend the site visit, it was very informative, and thank you to the officers for their help. I do truly sympathise with the residents who do not welcome changes or development in what is really a lovely area, but this is a large site that could comfortably accommodate two detached family properties, and quite truthfully, I'm having difficulty in establishing in my own mind, as it were. And quite truthfully, I'm having difficulty in establishing in my own mind, as it were, acceptable planning considerations to refuse this application. I do have a number of concerns, particularly with regard to the trees. However, I am sure that officers, should planning permission be granted, will be taking those into account. I also have further concerns regarding the unusual situation of all matters being reserved. I don't think that I've come across this situation before. Usually, there has been some indication or indicative design or thoughts regarding development on a site. And I do agree with Mr Davis from the parish council that this is of concern to me as well and I don't think it's helpful for me to come to an informed decision because there is insufficient information relating to what is an important site. We have to accept that, should permission be granted, there is no going back and actually it would be very difficult, I think, to restrain development that perhaps might not be appropriate in that area if all matters are reserved as they are. But I would welcome my colleagues' information or observations regarding this application because I do have concerns that I cannot find proper planning considerations to refuse this at the moment. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Ellis. Councillor Band.
Thank you, chairman. Well, I too felt that the site visit was extremely useful and thank the officers for spending the time to show us round. And I think one thing it did bring home to me, though I was already fairly familiar with Plough Lane, just what an open site it was, particularly to the north and to the south, and how far away from the site, certainly to the west, existing houses are. So, this is not a typical infill site at all, in my view, and without any details of the proposed housing, it's very difficult, I find it very difficult, to actually make a judgement as to what impact they would have on the surroundings. I'm also concerned because this is AGLV and, as I understand it, as a borough, we have, in our draft local plan, accepted that we will treat AGLV as AANOB until the final AANOB boundary review has taken place. And I also understand, again, as a borough, we have supported the AANOB boundary review process. So, you know, this is not just AGLV, we should be treating it as equivalent to AANOB. And I think that makes another challenge for us, a hurdle to overcome in terms of the impact on the countryside. I think it is remote from the village. I think although, obviously, if two additional houses were built here, they would not be two isolated houses on their own because there are other houses on Plough Lane. But I would certainly argue that all of Plough Lane are isolated dwellings. So, I would suggest, from my perspective, that special circumstances are required to justify housing on Plough Lane. And I don't see that coming forward at the moment. So, I too, I'm really concerned about this application as to its impact on the countryside without any significant detail for us to judge it by. I am concerned that this is an area which is in effect being treated as AANOB and that is being ignored, it seems to me. I believe these are, as a quantum, as I said, isolated dwellings and these may add to them, but they are still isolated. They are some three, four hundred metres from the actual village settlement itself. And we've heard how far away the facilities of the village are from these houses. So, I am really concerned about this application and with the information in front of me at the moment, I'm minded to not be able to support the current officers' recommendation. Thank you, chairman.
Thank you, councillor Band. Officers, would you like to respond to any of the points that have been raised?
Yes, so, thank you, chairman. I think councillor Goodridge, go back to some of your points earlier. You're right, in regard to precedents in planning, no, there aren't precedents. Each application is to be assessed on its own merits. The reason, in this particular case, we did refer to another permission elsewhere in the borough was because of the similarities in terms of the planning constraints, you could say, i.e. it was for two dwellings in between housing, which is outside of the settlement boundary in the countryside beyond the Green Belt. And so that is just to really to show members that we have had some of these other types of applications within the borough elsewhere and that our view on the countryside impact, you could say, fell down to be similar to that one, i.e. situated in between dwellings. And so that's sort of our view there in terms of, there is no precedent to be set. In terms of, you referred to some of the points that the objectors raised in public speaking. I think with the first thing, with the countryside conflict, the policy C two does, in the local plan, does seek to protect it for its own sake, whereas in the MPPF it recognises the intrinsic character and beauty of the countryside. And so with this particular application, we have to identify the actual harm to the countryside character. We have two dwellings here. As actually mentioned in the person in support of the application, this is a number of dwellings front Plough Lane and this is, it is a vacant bit of land within Plough Lane. And so hence, we've come down on the side of, in favour of the application and it is for two dwellings. The details are limited in terms of the scale, form and design. With this application, however, should permission be granted tonight, a reserve matters application would need to be submitted and that would come before committee to determine the materials and details and scale of the dwellings and access as well. So, really, that's my response to that. I don't know if Elizabeth has anything else to add to that.
Chairman, just an additional comment. I think councillor Ellis raised a concern that this was pure outline, which I would agree is relatively unusual, though not completely unusual. Of course, it's completely lawful as an opportunity to an applicant to make an application in pure outline form. Clearly, the more information that they can provide you as planning committee with, the more satisfied you can be that the principle can be acceptable. So, it is your judgement as to whether or not with an outline application, you can be satisfied that the principle is acceptable and that a development for the proposed description could be satisfactorily accommodated on the site without creating planning harm. In this particular instance, if you feel you haven't had sufficient information to satisfy you that such development could be achieved, then it is open to you to come to the conclusion that you're not satisfied the principle's acceptable. But I would guard you against finding fault that with an outline application, they haven't submitted sufficient detail at this stage because they're not required to in outline form, if you follow me. I think, to add to what Tim said about precedent, I would totally agree, we're not seeking to suggest that this has to be agreed because something else elsewhere in the borough has been agreed, which is similar. I think all we thought that it was helpful was to draw your attention to a similar site with similar circumstances, which could be taken into account as a material planning consideration, but the weight to be attached to that decision is for you as planning committee. So, if for the reasons given, you choose, you wish to give very limited weight to it, that is entirely within your gift in assessing it. And the only other comment I would make was councillor Goodridge asked me to respond to some of the comments from the public gallery. I think Tim has covered off most of them, but one comment was raised about the five-year supply position. Members will have seen the Hewitts industrial estate decision, it's only recently received by us and we are looking at it intently. We haven't had sufficient time to review it fully with our lawyers, but at this present point in time, we are maintaining the position, we're confident in our position and that we do have a five-year supply of housing. What is critical for this application is that we're not advising you to give more weight to the principle of development because we don't have a five-year supply. What we're saying to you is, as far as we're concerned at this present point in time, we do have a five-year supply and therefore, we're not asking you to apply the paragraph fourteen, additional presumption in favour, which would apply if we didn't have a five-year supply. So, that's all I would add, chairman, to the framework to that. And I think the lawyer is adding, that's not too many words, but that is to satisfy you, you can make a judgement on it, even with the position on Hewitts having just been advised. Thank you very much, chairman, that's all I wanted to add.
Just to add to Elizabeth's comments, Mr Chairman, we are arguing that five-year housing land supply position at a current public inquiry that is taking place as this committee sits.
Thank you. Councillor Voroszewski.
Thank you, chairman. Unfortunately, I wasn't able to go to the site visit, but I do know that part of the world quite well. I'm really struggling with this because much has already been said and expressed eloquently by my fellow councillors. Where I struggle with this is, once the principle of development has been established, there's no going back. And I'm not convinced myself that I have sufficient information here to allow me to make that decision based on the fact that it is, and councillor Ellis expressed her concerns about the reserve matters of which I share. My colleague to the right of me, a ward member, also expressed the right type of development and if the right type of development we could see before us was there, then it would make our decision so much easier. And the applicant themselves talk about self-build. I mean, I'm a massive fan of self-builds and it would have been nice to have had some idea of what this plot could have lent itself to self-build. I think it's going to be very difficult not to establish a principle of development on this site because there are houses within the vicinity, although remote, but I'm not sure at this moment in time that I have sufficient information to be able to make an informed decision based on the fact that it is on reserve matters. And I would like more information, so I'm really, really struggling with this because I want to support the officers, but I don't feel that I can on this occasion. I've looked at what the parish council have said, US parish council have said, and as I say, I'm struggling with it because I think we've made comparisons which weren't necessary. We don't have this adequate information. It's already been expressed that if the right type of development was there, it would have made our decision that little bit easier. So, again, I don't suppose there's much more to be said, but I'm struggling and we'll do right up until the vote, I think. Thank you, chairman.
Thank you. Councillor Dinas.
Thank you, Chair. I'll try not to repeat what other people have said. I think one of the only other issues that hasn't been mentioned, I don't think, was the U-Hurst Green Conservation Area. I don't think that's been mentioned, but of course, this area, a butt-sat area, so I just raised that. The Gardners Hill Road, I know Elizabeth has given an explanation, personally I actually found it caused me more problems and it has helped me, just as an issue on that one. My colleagues have all said this, actually. I've looked at the proposals, the benefits and seen if they outweigh any adverse impacts. I can't make that decision because there is just no information to do there. So, like most of my colleagues, I don't think I can make a decision because I haven't got the facts I need. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Sorry, councillor Seaborn.
Thank you, chairman. To me, this largely boils down to what has changed since this site was previously considered and the weight you give to the arguments. And I have to say that I really, you know, struggle, valiantly as the officers have made the attempt to persuade us that things have changed adequately in planning terms since previous appeals were turned down, I'm really struggling to see what the, you know, what the position is that is significantly different now and therefore, largely based on that, even though I respect a well-argued case by the officers, I think my inclination is to turn this down, just to not be prepared to support the proposal because I'm not convinced that enough has been demonstrated to show a change in the circumstances since previous appeals have been turned down. Thank you, chairman.
Thank you, councillor Seaborn. Thank you, members. Any last questions before we move to the recommendation? Councillor Gray.
Thank you, Mr Chairman. Just a couple of points. I pick up again on the self-build. I mean, has that, is that an issue in this case that we should take any note of? It's not two self-builds, it's one self-build and then the sale of another house. There was concerns on the site visit for the protection of the oak tree and I noticed that the applicant was very clear in saying that they would be using the existing access. I'm not sure the existing access is suitable, although we can't make any comments on that because this is an outline application with all matters reserved. And I tend to share my colleagues' comments that there really isn't sufficient information here for us to make some of the judgements that we're being expected to. I don't think the applicant has helped themselves by not giving us more of an indication. It is an exception site, it is in the countryside. I do accept the officers' comments that things have changed, but I don't know whether this, in my mind, fits into that and whether there are not still objections. I think there was a comment made by one of the objectors and I note that there's a lot of objection to the lack of having a habitat survey. Perhaps the officers could come back on the self-build issue and the habitat survey to help me form a judgement.
Officers, would you like to comment on that?
Mr Chairman, with regard to the Self-Build and Custom House Building Act two thousand and fifteen, we would take the view that this is not a self-build proposal to which the act applies. It's not a fully serviced plot, it's not on our register of self-build plots. Therefore, it's not a self-build, within quotes, to which the section duty to grant, to consider the grant of planning permission, may apply. That's the position, councillor.
Elizabeth, did you wish to speak?
Only to say, chairman, grateful to Barry for clarifying that, but I think what that suggests to your consideration is you don't need to give weight to that consideration in balancing up whether you grant permission or refuse permission because it doesn't actually meet the criteria of the new duty to consider self-build plots. Thank you.
Thank you, members. Are you happy that we moved on? Councillor Gray would like to come.
Could we have a reply to the issue of the habitat survey, please?
Okay, on this, I think what it comes down to is Surrey Wildlife Trust, their initial objection after further information was submitted was overcome. They felt there was enough information to make a decision here. And as that was the case initially, they were saying there was insufficient information, further information was provided. There's a big difference between what you would need in terms of information for granting, getting a protected species licence and getting plan permission. Planning and licensing are two different and separate consent regimes. So, in terms of the scale of the development, in terms of the plot, in terms of the proportionality being applied, Surrey Wildlife Trust was satisfied that a decision could be made as subject to several conditions and precautionary working methods being required to be carried out throughout. And you'll see those conditions in the recommendations. So, that's the expert advice that we've taken. We were working with them very closely up until yesterday and therefore, we were felt confident to proceed to a decision on that basis.
Thank you, members. Are you happy for me to move to the recommendation now? So, the recommendation is that subject to conditions, one... So the recommendation is that subject to conditions 1, 2 to 14, renumbered 3 to 15, and amended as set out in the update sheet. New condition 2, amended condition 10, and informatives 1 to 14 as set out in the report, plus additional conditions 16, 17 and 18 as set out on the update sheet, permission be granted. May I have those in favour of recommendation to grant, please?
Two, three.
And those against?
One.
Thank you. So that recommendation has failed, so we need to have some recommendations for, reasons for refusing the application, please.
Alternative motion.
Sorry? Could I have an alternative motion first, please? councillor Goodrich.
Recommendation we refuse. If you want the grounds now or we leave it till later, but I mean, start off with all the reasons for refusal last time, and there is insufficient information to be able to make a judgement as to how this proposed buildings would have an impact on the countryside and neighbouring dwellings.
Thank you. Do I have a second, councillor Henry? Thank you. Officers, would you like to enlarge on those reasons?
Chairman, having listened to the debate, taking into account in the round the concerns that have been raised and what's just been suggested by councillor Goodrich, I would suggest a single reason for refusal to capture all. And if I could suggest, Chairman, some wording, to start taking into account the previous planning history. Insufficient information has been submitted through this outline application to satisfy the council that the site could be developed without causing material planning harm in terms of an adverse impact upon the character of the countryside and the landscape, which is AGLV, and at that point in evidence going forward, we would expand the point that at this point we're treating it as AONB, but I think that should be left out of the reason for refusal. And the rural character of the street scene, contrary to policies C2 and C3 of the Waverley Local Plan 2002 and paragraph 17 of the NPPF. I would suggest that probably covers it, Chairman, if that's helpful.
Quite happy with that, Mr Chairman.
Okay, councillor Henry, are you happy with that, to second act?
In the main, can we include the sustainability bit?
I suggest that then would be a separate reason, that you consider this site to constitute isolated development for purposes of paragraph 55 of the NPPF for which no special circumstances have been shown, because that is a new consideration over and above those which would have been considered in terms of the previous history, because the isolated development concept came in with the NPPF in itself. So there'll be two reasons for refusal, the first that I read out, and then the second one indicating that you believe this to constitute isolated development.
councillor Henry, are you happy with that?
Think I am, if you can regurgitate that all so I can get it in my psyche, is that possible?
Go ahead.
So reason one would say something along the lines that the council considers this site to constitute isolated, an isolated site, or that this development would be isolated development for purposes of paragraph 55 of the NPPF for which no special circumstances, and that's the term used in that paragraph, exist to justify the development. So in other words, isolated development can sometimes be acceptable if those special circumstances are shown, but I'm reading from your discussion, you don't think that those special circumstances have been justified. That would be reason one. And then the second reason, would you like me to read it again? Taking into account the previous planning history, insufficient information has been submitted through this outline application to satisfy the council that the site could be developed without causing material planning harm in terms of an adverse impact upon the character of the countryside and the landscape, which is AGLV, and the rural character of the street scene, contrary to policies C3 of the Waverley Local Plan 2002 and paragraph 17 of the NPPF.
Right, members, may I have those in favour of the recommendation or the motion to refuse as just outlined? Those against? And abstentions.
One, two, three.
That motion to refuse is carried. So I don't know if the public gallery are going to empty now. Right, members, we'll move on to item B1, which is alterations to barn to provide three dwellings following demolition of part of existing building at Springhouse Willinghurst Estate, Shamley Green, GU50SU. Flo, would you like to introduce the application to the committee, please?
Thank you, Chairman. As an introduction, the proposal is a revision of an earlier scheme, which members may recall was granted permission by committee in January 2013. The previous scheme granted planning permission for alterations to the barn, subject of this application, into a single five-bedroom dwelling house with integrated garage, together with a small extension to form a pool-changing facility. The current scheme differs from the previous scheme in that it seeks permission for three, four-bedroom dwellings within the existing barn structure and would be clad in a different style, using darker timber, and would have a basement extension to provide garaging, plant room and additional habitable accommodation. The site outlined red on this plan here is located to the south of the Willinghurst Estate Road, which comes up here. The immediate area has a steep gradient sloping downwards from north to south. The site is occupied by a large concrete-framed barn, which is currently used for domestic storage and has not been in agricultural use for a number of years. The surrounding area comprises sporadic residential development and land in agricultural and forestry uses. In this 2012 aerial image, members will note the building site to the east of the site, just where I'm pointing now, which now comprises a detached contemporary dwelling. To the north-west of the site is Willinghurst Farmhouse, where I'm pointing now, which is a residential dwelling. An author of note are the two barns, just where I'm pointing now, which form part of the Willinghurst Farmhouse curtilage, and were granted permission by this committee for change of use into two detached dwellings last year. Looking at the site photos, the existing barn can be seen in these images. Top left shows a view from the north-west with the western side elevation nearest the camera and the northern elevation alongside the estate road. Top right shows the view of the eastern side elevation. Bottom left shows a view through the covered section of the southern side, and bottom right shows a view looking up the hill from the south-east. The bottom centre image shows the barn to the left-hand side and the adjacent contemporary dwelling to its east. Looking at the existing site layout plan, I'm just showing you the existing barn now. The image shows the structure as existing, with the main barn area forming the top section, this section here, the large covered area forming the middle section, and the existing outbuilding forming the bottom section down here. The site layout plan shows how the three dwellings would be housed within the existing structure. They're side by side within the image. Looking at the proposed elevations, firstly that of the front and rear elevations, and secondly, on the next slide, the side elevations. The existing structure would be retained and timber-clad with charred larch and appropriate windows and doors added. The charred larch would wrap around the building with fluting to open louvre of varying spacing in response to the uses inside and the need for privacy. This image shows an image of the 3D model of the scheme, which is also on the table for members to see in front of them, which shows how the scheme would work with the proposed materials, and this is further shown on the indicative images. These show the aspiration of what it would look like. Turning to the floor plans, these show the split of the three dwellings across the barn. The two left-hand side dwellings have the same layout and the right-hand dwelling mirrors this. At basement level, there would be a vehicular access road which comes round here, parking for two cars and bikes, plant room and habitable accommodation. At first-floor level, there is habitable accommodation and gardens and access paths for each dwelling, with the two end dwellings benefiting from side as well as rear gardens. And the first-floor plan shows further habitable accommodation. Turning to the determining issues, in conclusion, officers consider that the proposal would be acceptable in the green belt and preserve the landscape character of the AONB and AGLV. The barn is considered to be capable of reuse and the proposed design would be acceptable in the rural location. Officers raise no concerns in respect of access and parking or harm to residential amenity subject to conditions. The matters of technical opinion are the principle of development, the planning history and differences with the previous proposal, lawful use of the site and loss of agricultural land, location of development, housing land supply, high-rise access and parking, and biodiversity. The matters of judgement for members are the impact on the green belt, impact on the AONB and AGLV, impact on visual and residential amenity, and standard of accommodation and amenity space. And just looking at updates, if I could draw members' attentions to the update sheet, members will note an update to the report in respect of the local plan being submitted. Additionally, a consultation response has been received from the Surrey Wildlife Trust suggesting the imposition of an additional condition should planning permission be granted. This condition would be in respect of the submission and agreement by the local planning authority of a precautionary working method statement. Moving to the recommendation, the revised officer recommendation is that subject to conditions 1 to 13 and informatives 1 to 17 on pages 61 to 68 of the agenda report, and additional condition 14, as shown on the update sheet, that permission be granted. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you, Flo. Members, I open it up to you, councillor Band.
Thank you, Chairman. Well, seeing we, as a council, gave planning consent for this some three years ago, the principle of using this barn seems to me, it's established. And the issue for me is, do these new proposals, are they worse or better than what was there before? And from my perspective, I actually think they're a better design than what was there before, so I support the officer's recommendation. My concern, if any, is the realism of retaining the existing concrete portal structure. I was concerned about that three years ago. It's been underwritten now by this consulting engineer's report, albeit that report was pretty heavily qualified in places. I mean, it did exclude things, you know, and quite a lot of stuff. You actually read the detail of the report, maybe excludes any assessment, for example, of the capacity of the structural elements for either present or future use. Now, that's a quote from the report. I'm sure the intention is good, I just don't know how, in planning terms, we can ensure that the developer actually holds to using the portal structure. And that's my concern. Planning officers may advise it's not even a planning issue, it's for later in the day. But in principle, I support the application, I think it's the overall design and appearance is an improvement of what was proposed before. But I do have reservations about the realism of retaining that existing portal structure. And if it can't be maintained, it seems to me to destroy the whole basis of the planning consent. So that's where my concern comes from, because the old RD7 made it very clear, it was substantial redevelopment using substantial use of the existing structure. And if you can't use the existing portal structure, the whole pack of cards come tumbling down, hopefully not literally, but certainly metaphorically. So thank you, Chairman.
Thank you, councillor Band. I would like to say that I actually did a conversion of a similar concrete structure down Plough Lane, funnily enough, where we were just now, and that stood up very well, and fingers crossed the whole place is still standing. But I do agree, I think it's a very exciting and interesting design. councillor Voracewski.
Yes, thank you, Chairman. I absolutely love it, I think it's brilliant. I think, if my memory serves me correctly, not too far to the left of this particular building is quite a grand design scheme anyway, so in keeping with the surrounding, but fabulous, creative, visionary, wonderful, and I wouldn't worry too much about the original structure because I'm sure if you were going to invest that level of input, they're going to get the foundations correct. But well done, it's a great, great, great application.
Yes, I supported this application three years ago, and I don't see any reason not to now. The reservations that councillor Band made with regard to the structure, I support in the sense that within Bramley we had a similar situation, much smaller scheme, we granted permission for the reuse of a barn structure, and in the bad snows of three or four years ago, whenever it was, it collapsed, the roof collapsed, and we had started from a ground floor level again, which was quite a struggle for the officers. I don't think, and perhaps officers might tell us whether things have changed from a planning perspective with regard to if you don't reuse the structure you have now, whether the new, any new guidelines in NPBF etc. will actually make it easier, but I'm not suggesting we want to change. The only other point I make is it's very futuristic, very interesting. We have a futuristic string of houses in Bramley that has been finished for at least 12 months and hasn't sold, but at least one has out of four, but totally different again, but very futuristic in appearance and didn't seem to be acceptable. But that's not a good reason for doing anything other than granting permission for this one, in my view.
Thank you. Elizabeth, you're looking at me, would you like to comment on councillor Band's concerns about the existing structure?
Thank you, Chairman. Only to say, and I know members will fully appreciate this, but we've assessed it on its merits, taken into account the structural information, and we take that as expert advice and we recommend you give it weight. If, however, it doesn't pan out and the building fell down, they would need planning permission to rebuild it, so I'm sure they're aware of that. What is interesting, actually, and I think councillor Biom asked whether anything had changed in planning policy, it has subtly changed in that policy RD7 of your current local plan, which we've quoted, of course... in that policy RD7 of your current local plan, which we've quoted, of course, requires in terms of reuse, that buildings are reused without substantial reconstruction. So it factors in the structural side with the actual reuse activity, whereas in fact, the NPPF only requires an applicant to satisfy so that the building in itself is structurally sound before you assess the proposal. So it's almost the same argument, but there has been some watering down of the position. But it does remain, as I said at the beginning, if this were to fall down, either during construction or even before, they would need planning permission to rebuild it. So you retain the full control over the end result. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you. Members, any last questions before we move to the recommendation? Right. So the recommendation is that subject to conditions 1 to 13, and informatives 1 to 17, as set out on pages 61 to 68 of the report, plus additional condition 14, as set out on the update sheet, permission be granted. May I have those in favour of the recommendation to grant?
That's unanimous, Chairman.
Jolly good. Thank you, members. The recommendation to grant is agreed. There are no items to consider in exception, so that concludes this meeting for this evening. Thank you, members.